So this is a reduction for us in this budget. Next, we have the budget savings. As with past years, we use the same number typically because we don't want to get beyond ourself with the retirement savings. And again, as I say each year, we could have more retirements and, you know, we will be looking for those. So most people who are going to retire will notify us usually after this presentation. So in February, there's an incentive for them to notify us sooner rather than later. And you see, that's $300,000 in savings and special education out of district, that's the OOD, that's what that means, out of district tuition. And I want to thank Mary Kristofaro and her team for working diligently last year. So they were able to realize a $400,000 savings for out-of-district placement. That is something that is a significant cost to us on a regular basis. So they have done a great job of bringing students back to the district and saving us some money there. Fuel, $63,000, and then again, magnet school tuition. We've budgeted the $200,000, but we can't guarantee that number, but that's our budgeted amount. So total operating costs for 24-25 school year was $84,313,339. The increase to the budget being proposed is 7.55% or $6,362,469. Total operating costs for 25-26 school year being proposed is $90 million. And I will stop there unless you want me to go ahead and read off the follow-up meetings to the budget, to the public, if you want to do that.
No, I think that's fine. What I'd like to do is have board members ask you questions about what you've presented. Obviously, all the details probably in the budget book, but Ms. Bachelder's been busy at the last minute making sure that everything is in line for us. And we'll be looking at those, obviously, under Secretary Lockhart's leadership as finance chair, we'll be going through the budget book. But I'd like to have questions really related to just the PowerPoint presentation, either something you're not sure of or want something fleshed out, that type of thing.
When you say fleshed out, what do you mean? Like, how far are we going tonight?
Not, not super deep. I think we talked in our executive committee meeting that we're going to be getting into that book Tuesday, next Tuesday, less than a week from now. So, but if there's something here overall that folks don't understand, or they think anybody may be watching this at home or taping it, would want an explanation before we get in if there's something someone doesn't understand.
Sure.
Ethan, I think you had your hand up, and then Paul.
Yes, my question is under technology and instructional services. So for the state mandated reading program, I had two questions. The first one was, have you heard or received any communication from the state on where they're at as far as that being mandated? And secondly, the follow-up would be just about the number we have here, because I think this number is a lot lower than what we initially projected. So, I mean, if it's not too deep, like, how did it get there?
No, 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 no. So first, I can answer your first question. Nope, it's all, it's full steam ahead. So every school district is still required to, you know, follow through on this mandated program that the state had, I've been talking about for the last three years. And as far as the program, I will hand the mic over to Dr. Haiti, because I believe that she and her team, they just, with the pilot in them being fiscally responsible, found a program that worked best for us. And I am grateful that it's lower than what we were projecting.
Yes, so we did pilot a program this year, and we were able, so we had the little grant that we got last year, right-to-read, that we were able to use some of that funding to purchase some material for next year. Also, I used some of the money that I have in my instructional services to buy bits and pieces so that when we present a budget, it's a reasonable number. But we did pilot a program, the state is still mandating it. As an alliance district, we do get monitoring three times a year. So at the beginning of the year, we were asked about our progress in terms of finding a program and what our plans are. So we are being, we're coming up on our mid-year monitoring meeting, and they will be expecting us to share which program we're going to go on with.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
You know, largely the question I was going to ask. Last year, there was $100,000 for the reading program. Is that, this is additive to it? Is that it? Or is this the...
So the right-to-read grant that we received last year, it was for a district to be able to start piloting programs. So we used that money to pilot a program, Bookworms, this year. But we had some left over that we were able to purchase some, not all the material that we're going to need for next year. And that's why this money is in addition to whatever we had left over.
Okay. Now, it's just, this is elementary, right? This all...
K3.
K2?
K1, 2, and 3.
K1, 2, and 3, yep. Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, be curious, well, I guess I'll wait for the presentation, how we're reducing the tuition, special ed tuition. I think I can wait for that.
Oh, the out-of-district placements?
Out-of-district placements, I noticed that...
We can do it during the presentation.
Quite a bit lower than they were a few years ago. They used to run around 50, and now they're running around 30. You expect to go even lower? Is it? Oh, maybe, take it up, please.
If you feel...
Sorry.
Yeah, so we've had great cooperation between our schools and our principals and the special ed team being able to bring kids back to district to either go into our in-district programs or to be absorbed in the mainstream. We've had, every student we've brought back has stayed back and is being successful. So I do anticipate being able to bring back more, and we've also not been sending kids out. We've been programming for them in-district successfully.
Are the, the increase in the healthcare costs, maybe that'll be, maybe this is jumping ahead to, you know, are, are they, is it just a small number of people? Or is it a large number of people that have increases? Or are these, you know, health, just generally the...
I think it's, he can, because we answered it at the other board meeting, so I think Ms. Bachelder can answer that real quick.
Yep, if you can.
Sure, so there's different thresholds for stop-loss. So our stop-loss is currently 200,000. So anything above and beyond 200,000, the stop-loss kicks in.
You have insurance.
So we pay for everything to 199,000 and less. So we have had upward between, like, I want to say 12 to 17 employees that have hit that stop-loss over the past year. And then we also have a handful of people that are just below that stop-loss. But again, that, it's a very high number, you know, when we have been trending very low throughout the years. So, you know, I've been working really closely with Lockton because of this all year and got my, the projections directly from them. So we wouldn't be in a spot that we need to go back to the town next year and ask for money or need money for the, we have to fund the insurance fund. It's, I mean, it's as simple as that. We have high claims.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Let's see if anybody else, no one else? Mr. Wallaston.
Yes, it's just a follow-up to the question that Mr. Panos had about, what was it? The in-district special education, retaining our kids. So I do appreciate that initiative as it saves us money. I was just wondering how have we responded to that from a budgetary aspect of like, how are we preparing for the increased amount of kids we have? Are we, have we found ourselves like hiring more? Are we retaining staff? Or is staff overwhelmed? Or are we having like success with the amount of...
Is the 400,000 net savings?
I knew that's what it was going to be.
Okay, so, no, so what, every year, we add around 300 to 500,000. So that was that savings that was outlined in the presentation. Because we are keeping it flat this year, is a significant savings to the board from what we always have done in the past.
And I, and I want to add to Mr. Wallaston's, the other part of the question, what I heard, is not a lot of students. Like, just to stress to the community just how expensive out placements can be. So it's not, it's usually a handful of kids.
It's about 130,000 a student right now. That's how they average for out-of-placement right now is.
We don't need more staff.
Thank you.
Well, just on that, I mean, if you just, our budget right now is about 6.2 million for 30 students. That's 200, that's over $200,000. But I guess you're expecting we're going to get money, the town gets money back? How are you calculating that?
So we don't calculate the excess cost. We, we just budget 100% of the cost. All money's above 4.5%, 4.5 times the per pupil expenditure goes back to the town as revenue. That's how we've always done the budget in Windsor.
Okay. Well, okay, I'm getting into detail.
Anyone else? Ms. Taylor, sorry.
You know, just for folks that may not know, I don't know if this should come from you, Ms. Kristofaro, or for you, Ms. Bachelder, like, can you just explain how the special education cost is, is revenue?
I missed the one part of that.
The excess cost, how do we, why do we count that as revenue?
So the state of Connecticut allows, pays districts what's called an excess cost. So anything above and beyond 4.5 times the number what a per pupil expenditure cost would be, so it's roughly around $97,000. So anything above and beyond roughly $97,000 for the tuition and transportation, we then, the state then reimburses either the district or the town, depending on how that relationship is. We budget 100%, so the revenue goes to the town to offset the total mill rate when, you know, they're doing their budget each year to set the tax, the mill rate, excuse me.
So the state doesn't pay 100%?
So then they cap the excess cost on top of the 4.5 times. So the cap for 24-25 is around 73%. So the town of Windsor is only receiving around 73% of the total cost they should be receiving for all of our excess funds.
Do you think that's, was that helpful, like, to the public, you think? Because I was going to give them a quick example. If we spend $100 more than the state says we're supposed to, then they reimburse us $73. So people clearly understand. And I'll throw out there that we have a rep from Windsor who will be chairing the subcommittee for special education at the legislature this, during this legislative session, Representative Khan. So feel free to reach out to her. I know she'd love to hear from you. I intend to be speaking at the Legislative Office Building a few times this session. And this is a big one, special education.
Thank you. And I know we have our cave president here who's looking at a lot of different legislation and leading that charge, and some of the proposals, including dropping that 4.5%, maybe to 3.5%, and also not capping the excess cost at 73%. So a lot of opportunities for residents too, to weigh into their representatives. Any other questions for Dr. Hill? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to the public forum, unless there's any closing statement you'd like to make.
Oh, I would. Can I share the dates?
Yes.
Thank you. So for those of you dying to get into the budget into greater detail, we have upcoming budget meetings. So public forums with the Finance Committee, that will be the whole board. So a few years back, we decided to do that. So instead of a subcommittee, the whole board represents on this committee, which is great. So Tuesday, the 28th, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. Wednesday, February 5th, 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. Tuesday, February 11th, 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. And if need be, Thursday, February 13th, at 6:30 PM here in the boardroom, if needed. So during these meetings, we go through the entire, this is just my presentation, so it's just the overview, but we go through the entire budget book. So we look at every school, their budgets individually, every department. So every single dollar that's spent by the district, we go through the requisite pages and you see all the employees that are paid and salaries. So that's the very detailed meetings, if you're so inclined to come to those meetings. You're more than welcome. And then finally, on, at the BOE meeting for February 22nd, 7:00 PM here in the boardroom, that will be when the board votes on the adoption of the budget, whichever, wherever we land, they vote on the budget that night. And then that's the budget that gets moved on to Town Council. That'll be February 22nd, it's a Wednesday, at 7:00 PM here in LP Wilson. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, next, part of the agenda is a public forum on the budget, and it's limited to, up to 30, no longer than 30 minutes. And folks will have, if anybody wants to, in the boardroom here, come up and give your opinion or thoughts on the budget or the budget process. You have three minutes to do so, and we'll allow the same online. So I'll ask, is there anybody who'd like to address the board regarding the budget? Is there anybody online?
We do have attendees online, although there appears to be an audio issue with anyone logged in. There are currently only two attendees that are not currently in this room.
Okay, is there anybody who's written in a question or...
The only question is in regards to the audio issue that we're having. There are no other comments or questions.
Okay. Last call, if anybody in the boardroom would like to address the board. Seeing and hearing no one, I'm going to adjourn the public forum, and we'll be back for the regular meeting after a five-minute recess.
I'd like to correct for the public, earlier during the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget for 2526, I shared that the board would do its adoption vote on February 22nd, 2025. That is incorrect. That date will be Wednesday, February 19th at 7:00 PM here in the LPW boardroom. Again, Wednesday, February 19th at 7:00 PM here in the LP Wilson boardroom. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And for the public, we hope to have the actual full budget on the Board of Ed website, hopefully tomorrow. Next item on the agenda is recognitions. Dr. Hill, I actually have the certificate for Victor, and we have our photographer. So Victor, do you want to come up?
Get a picture for Jill. We'll have to put Jill Leonard out there.
We're recognizing our student representative, Victor Montilla. And our certificate reads, Victor Montilla is hereby recognized for his outstanding service as the student representative to the Windsor Board of Education, awarded this 22nd day of January 2025.
Victor, you are going to be a very hard act to follow. I don't know what you've done for our future folks. You raise the bar.
Oh, we didn't do the picture.
That's all right. Get a picture.
Sit up and smoke the whole time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and good luck to you in your future endeavors.
Ayana and Mr. Wallston is going to have some more work to do.
Congratulations, Victor. I'm so proud of you. You did an awesome job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Next item on the agenda is audience to visitor, and Robin, if you could read your script.
Good evening. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public that would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q and A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking Raise Hand or dialing *9 within the Zoom app. When you are called on to speak, you'll be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
Thank you. And at the two and a half minute mark, if somebody is speaking in the room, Ms. Taylor will raise a red card briefly to tell you to start winding up your remarks. And at the three-minute mark, she'll hold it up and keep it up, and at that point really try to finish up. And for people who may try to call in, I know we have difficulty tonight, after the three-minute mark, Ms. Taylor will let you know that you have to finish your remarks. So at this point, is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight? Please sign in and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Zotter. I reside at 28th Spring Street in Windsor, and my daughter Ariella is a fifth grader at JFK. And I'm actually here for a request, and the request is, we have a group of students at John F. Kennedy that have been working very diligently to try to bring more sustainability to their school. We have piloted a compost and terracycle program, and we would love for them to have the opportunity to talk about the programs and the results that they're seeing to the Board of Education. And I know budget season is crazy, but if you need a little bit of a lighthearted, fun presentation from a group of fifth graders, we would love the opportunity. So if you do have room in your agenda over the next few months, you can reach out to Principal Gagne, and then we will make sure that we have the kids have their presentation ready, so you can hear about all of the phenomenal things that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thought we were going to hear about the dance. Anyone else in the boardroom who'd like to address the board? See, none? Is there anybody online that can get through or has a question?
There are no attendees with their hands raised, and there are no comments or Q and As.
Okay, without objection on either side, we're going to close. Audience to visitor. Next item is the consent agenda, and is there any item, the four items, there's anything that anybody wants pulled? And is there any item, the four items, there's anything that anybody wants pulled? Okay, if you could read that, Ms. Taylor?
Yep. I move the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Item 7A Financial Report, 7B Enrollment Report, 7C Food Service Report, and 7D Human Resources Report.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Abstention? Motion carries 800. No.
I forget you're here. I'm so sorry. In your, in my ear. It's interesting.
Next item is the approval of minutes, and there's two minutes. One's a special meeting and one the regular meeting. Does anybody want either of those pulled? Want to read the motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the Minutes of December 17th, 2024 Special Meeting and the December 17th, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Abstention? Motion carries 800. Item number nine. Victor, your last report.
So, Happy New Year, everyone. It's a bit late, but, and good evening. So the first thing I'd like to start off with is the Student Alumni Panel. So on behalf of the senior class, I'd like to thank the Counseling Department, especially Ms. Fudge and Ms. Atterbury Wine for organizing the Student Alumni Panel last January 3rd. The event provided useful information about life after high school and offered a glimpse of what college and other post-secondary education is like. The panel featured alumni who shared their experiences and practical advice, helping us to understand the transition from high school to college. Discussion was crucial for seniors preparing for the next step in their academic journey. Second are the midterm exams. So Windsor High School held its midterm exams from January 13th to the 17th. Everything went well as we reached the halfway point of the school year. This marks the second year since midterm exams were reinstated as 20% of the total semester grade. Third, the Martin Luther King Day Celebration. The WHS Teens of Praise Gospel Choir, led by Dr. White, performed at the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration last January 20th at the Windsor Town Hall Council Chambers. The choir's powerful songs set the tone for the event, bringing the community together to honor and reflect on Dr. King's legacy. Number four, the Athletics Department. Our Windsor sports season is underway at WHS. Athletes have been training hard in preparation for the competitions. The boys' basketball team has been rolling with an 8-3 record and will aim for their fourth straight win when they take on Connor tomorrow. The girls' basketball team is currently facing off against Glastonbury with an impressive 7-2 record. We're excited to see if they can improve to 8-2 after tonight's game. Our talented Unified Sports Team played an exciting game against Enfield last December, which ended in a well-fought tie. They're set to take on Simsbury on January 29th at the WHS Gym. Encourage everyone to come out and show their support, as our Unified Sports Team continues to display incredible skills, horrenship, and team spirit. Let's cheer them on. Last, but certainly not least, is the WHS Talent Show. Join us on January 30th at 7:00 PM for the Windsor High School Talent Show in the auditorium. We'll be showcasing an exciting lineup of singing, dancing, and much more, performed by our incredibly talented students. In the spirit of giving, we kindly ask attendees to bring things to support the Windsor Food Bank. Enjoy a fantastic show and support a great cause. As this is my final board meeting, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to represent Windsor High School. I remain committed to supporting my community in any way I can. Thank you for your trust and support during my time on this board. It's truly been a privilege.
Thank you very much. Any questions or parting comments for Victor? Ms. Taylor?
I am so proud of you. You've really done a great job. You're, he's absolutely right, Mr. President, because the bar has been set very, very high, very thorough. I always was left with nothing much to say, so I'm sure the board thanks you.
And that's coming from a parent of, of a senior who I'm sure knows what's, all the things going on in the school.
For whatever reason, he always has something, a nugget that I either didn't know or I didn't have the date for, so, well done.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I'd agree as well. Thank you so much for all you've done. You truly, every student brings their own aspect and just, you know, you did a great job letting your own specific light shine, staying true to yourself, and just bringing a different perspective to the board, so thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you again so much, and just to let Mr. Lockhart know, who had an important call to make, that we've just recognized Victor and will let you say, congratulate him or whatever, since you've had to be away.
Pardon me, sir, but, sir, you've been a very dynamic student rep on this board, and you've really, really set the bar high. You've really taken a lot of the thunder away from the, from the board reps here that represent Windsor High School. And, but you're very articulate, and I'm not going to say good luck to you because you prepared, I'm just going to say do well in your next chapter.
And I know if there were other issues, Ms. Kanter and Mr. Lockhart both have students at the high school, so they'd be watching to make sure you were covering all the highlights.
I usually ask, do you know your plans for next year yet, or is it too soon to say?
I think it's too soon, unfortunately.
No, it's okay. Great answer. So many options, right? That's exactly what Chloe says. Okay, thank you so much.
And again, if you'd like to stay, but I'm sure with a new semester, you really want to get on top of everything. So again, thank you for your service here.
And great episode on Chat and Show with Super Hill. Awesome.
The next item on the agenda is Board of Education and the President's Report. On Tuesday, January 7th, I went to Oliver Ellsworth and Paquonic Schools and was able to observe the Bookworms pilot in kindergarten, first, and second-grade classrooms. As we've heard earlier tonight, Bookworms is the language arts program that Windsor selected from the list of state-approved science of reading programs. I was accompanied by Ms. Michelle Williams, both at Oliver Ellsworth and at Paquonic. Principal Gruber brought us to various classrooms so that we were able to see all three, three grades there that are piloting the program. At Paquonic, I was with Principal Mahalco and the literacy coach, Kiva Griggs, and they brought us around. I was very impressed of what I saw in the classrooms. Students were able to articulate what they were working on, what the theme was, what was going on, and what they were learning. We were able to observe different modules. There's three different kind of sections that they have. It's a very intensive program. And there's one which looks like it was a differentiated group, where they were in small groups in front of a teacher with just three or four students at a, at a time. And other students were really on task in the classroom and other, other parts of the room. So again, that was very impressive to see. The materials looked great, and I, I was wondering how the cost was kept down for the upcoming year, because I think we were told it was probably going to be a lot higher, but luckily through some of the grants that you had for the pilot, because obviously now it's going to be rolled out throughout K1 and 2. And it sounds like there's great support from the Bookworms people, as well as teachers having professional development time who are working on this so they can share their experiences. The first time you do anything is always, can be difficult, but I was very impressed of what I saw at both schools. I had mentioned to Principal Mahalco and said, oh, you have some really good teachers doing this. He says, any of my teachers can be doing this. So again, hats off to both Paquonic and Oliver Ellsworth. And Dr. Haiti, thank you for arranging that so I could see that program in action. I know it was very difficult dealing with the state and getting rejected what we had, appealing it, getting rejected, sometimes bringing in state representatives and seeing what could be done. And Windsor's not the only one who went through this, so we know that many of our counterparts are doing the same thing now. On Tuesday, January 14th, I attended Senator McCrory's Community Forum on the Future of Public Education, hosted by Windsor Public Schools at Windsor High School and sponsored by the State Department of Education and CIRK. Senator McCrory and Dr. Russell Tucker both gave their thoughts on where we are, where we're going. Both Mr. Lockhart and Mr. Panos were in attendance. We had an opportunity to actually talk with other, others in the audience in small groups to be discussing questions that had been raised. And I think it was a great opportunity for Windsor to showcase our school. We had our orchestra, and Dr. Pierce, with a small group of orchestra students, perform prior to the event while people were milling around with some refreshments. On Thursday, January 16th, I participated in a CAPE Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Chair check-in. Leonard, as president of the board, was also on this call, along with staff members of CAPE. The central topic was the state legislature, and we heard a little bit earlier about there are many opportunities to be talking to our legislators about this. There's, there's a February 11th, CAPE, Crick, and HASSA Hartford Area Superintendent Association Legislative Breakfast. That's on February 11th, I believe, next week, next Monday. Both Representatives Khan and Garibay will be at LPW in the evening to, at 6:00, I think that time is. Another opportunity to meet with legislators. And the two main bills this year, I believe, both Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 5001, look like they're going to have an education theme. So this is hopefully the year of education. Hold our, cross our fingers. I attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on Monday at Town Hall, sponsored by the Archer Memorial AME Zion Church. The theme this year was, "The Time Is Always Right to Do What Is Right." Both Leonard, Paul, Nathan, and Jeremy were in attendance, and the keynote speaker was Ms. Taylor. As Victor mentioned earlier, Dr. Tracy White did not disappoint with the award-winning gospel choir. And Ms. Taylor mentioned that MLK is a day on and not a day off. And I think that, I think the number of people who were in that room believe that as well. She also introduced Bailey from Paquonic School, who is going to be a bright superstar, who wrote an MLK speech. And that's my report, but I'll defer to Ms. Taylor if she'd like to, to say a little more about that.
It was an honor to, to be asked to speak, and we received, the board received an email from Mr. Mahalco about a little girl named Bailey who, who wrote an essay that, that kind of blew them away, and I, and I read it, and I had to pivot. I had to somehow incorporate her into my, to my talking points, and I did, and her family was really proud to be asked to come, and she, she killed it. She, she really nailed it. And her little missing teeth grin, and she was so proud, and everybody, standing ovation for her. You know, I, I, I can't wait to see her in that seat right down there. She's going to do some great things. But it was great, standing room only, that hasn't happened, they said, ever for this event, but the choir was awesome, the mood was awesome, and I think we've outgrown that space, so we're, Madam Mayor. And Peter Sousa said, we might have to pivot and do, do something else, because there were just so many people there. But it was great, and thank you for my colleagues, Jeremy and Paul, and you, and all of you had great things to say, too. We were asked to speak and bring greetings on behalf of the district, so thank you for coming and supporting.
Thank you. Any question regarding President's Report? Next item is a technical correction of the Board Superintendent Contract, and you could read the motion.
I move that the Board of Education votes that the Board/Superintendent Contract be corrected to include the payment for the PhD stipend in annual base salary.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. And I know we have a, a statement here of what we're doing, but I don't know, Ms. Pat Helder, do you want to further describe? It is a technical change.
The PhD stipend that Dr. Hill receives should have always been put under, originally put under as base salary in order to, for it to be counted as pensionable. It was put under benefits in the original contract, which is why it's, we're correcting it now, because he should have been, being able to receive pension on that amount and also, you know, pay into tier beyond that amount.
So there's no additional compensation or anything else that we're just?
No, nothing at all.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Like to bring it to a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Abstention? Motion carries 900. Next item on the agenda, our school liaison reports. Ms. Taylor?
Talking a lot. Not much to add from what Victor shared, besides the choir that we're speaking about, the Teens of Praise. They are, come, they're going to perform, for anybody that can see me, I have a QR code here. They're going to perform at Loomis Chaffey School tomorrow at 7:00. I believe there's still tickets available. They are free, but they need people to register so that they can get an accounting of how many seats, and to know if they're essentially sold out, but they are free. The Shades of Yale will be performing as well, so this is a really amazing opportunity for our students and our program to be lifted to, for folks that haven't seen them before or want to see them again, because they just performed on Monday, but the room was filled with people saying, how can we see them again? Oh, you can, Thursday at Loomis Chaffey. So if anyone in the room would like to register for tickets, for each registration, you, you can get up to four tickets for each, you know, QR code scan. Other than that, I believe you mentioned all of, I believe the indoor track had an amazing meet. I, I heard that that was the case, and I saw a lot of, you know, hardware and certificates and things like that, so I don't know exactly all of the accolades, but I did see that a lot of our kiddos came back with, with hardware, which is really not surprising for, for all of our scholar athletes, so congratulations to them as well. And last but not least, Girls Basketball Senior Night is next Friday. I'm, I'm, I'm not crying. You might be crying, but I'm not crying. So it's January 31st at Windsor High School. The girls will be playing against East Hartford. Come out and support if you can. It's always a great time to support, especially our, our young folks that are going to be wrapping up their, their high school careers in sports. So that's all I have. I think Mr. Wallaston has some extra things to share.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I do have a few notes from our School Governance Council meeting. One of the things mentioned in the previous meeting was that there will be, they're exploring the Wellness Initiative. Some former students, Devonte Dillon and Terrell Huff, they're, they've come together and built. They're, they've come together and built an amazing business, but it's more than just a gym. And they're working with grant money that they received to possibly put together some wellness initiatives and trainings for our staff, utilizing and focusing on self-care for our staff and teachers. Some other things that were touched on were just that during this time, we're going through the knee ask, the portrait of a student, that whole situation, pardon me. Portrait of a graduate. And so pretty much we're going through and we're being like evaluated by this knee ask group, and we're just making sure we're on our Ps and Qs as far as making sure we're preparing students as best as we can for the world. Aside from that, we do have two surveys that are in the works. I know the students are putting together a survey to get out to their classmates just about incentives that they think other students would be interested in, just helping motivate them to either be on time or to do better in class. So they're just doing some of that ground research to see what more we can do as a school. And I know there is a parental survey going out as well from our parents on the Student Governance Council to be able to try to just see how we can engage them better. But that's all I've got to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Windsor High? Okay, Sage Park, Mr. King?
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. Not a whole ton to report, but I did just want to congratulate the kids on, they just completed their I-ready testing, as well as their third quarter starts today, as well as their midterms recently. So the kids at Sage Park have been very, very busy. They're getting ready for some cool trips and some things, but those were kind of the big ones right now, so we're looking forward to the next couple of months. Paul, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Mr. Panos?
Must add here, January 29th, PTO meeting, 6:00 at Sage Park. Thank you.
Any questions for folks from Sage Park? Next, Clover Street School?
Yeah, I went to the Martin Luther King event. Mrs. Lee and the teachers marched the kids all the way around the building, and they were quite energized. It was very aspirational, very positive. I loved it. It was interesting because there was no mention of race at all. It was strictly about everybody, and so, you know, fairness for everybody. It was interesting. It was very inclusive and very aspirational, which I thought was excellent. It was all done by the kids, which is really motivating. And then Dr. Parker was the guest speaker. His grandfather marched with Dr. King, so he was telling that story. So we're crossing a lot of generations there, both, you know, from Dr. Parker back to his grandfather and down to the kids. It was also fascinating to watch Dr. Parker speak to elementary school kids, which he's not used to. He went from high school level sentences down to very simple words by the end. It was awesome. I also absolutely love Mrs. Lee's new call and response with the kids. I was sitting there, and the kids were kind of noisy. She was getting them under control, so she marched them around the building, and she said, "No bees, no honey," and all the kids said, "No work, no money." I said, "Capitalism, baby. Train them well." I loved it. So, and now she was quick to say, I talked to her afterwards, that it's a metaphor, so it means like do your homework, get good grades and so on. I said, "I appreciate the metaphor. For me, it's no work, no money." So I just think that's a fascinating thing to drill into the kids, and I love it, because as you know, I believe in capitalism, and I can't sum up in a better sentence. And I understand all the oligarchy, all the junk that you can worry about, right? But boy, the core of it, no work, no money, and she has them trained, which is awesome. And then in January, on the 10th and the 13th, we had the orchestra concerts. 17th was the family dance, and on the 27th will be the band and chorus concerts. Thank you.
Great. Any questions for Clover? John F. Kennedy? Jill, I don't?
Thank you, Professor Dr. Gray. On Monday, January 20th, we celebrated Martin Luther King Day. On Monday, January 27th, is instrumental concert. On Thursday, January 30th, is choir and strings concert. And I just want to tell you, they always do an exceptional performance. Every single performance is really beautiful and so well-done, and they're so young to be able to do this, and it's so beautiful. Then on Monday, February 10th, they have the PTO meeting. On February 11th, no school. Monday and Tuesday, February 17th and 18th, no school for President's Day break. On President's Day, it's their spring, their break. And then I just wanted to say happy Chinese New Year, Gong He Fat Choy to the Chinese community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for JFK? Oliver Ellsworth? Mr. Lockhart?
Nothing to report. Most of the activities are going to be in February with the PTO meeting and its spring break. I'm hoping we're at the finish line for the punch list for the HVAC system. It's been a long ride, but we've been really staying on the contractors along with town facilities, so it's been a labor of love, but hopefully we can finally put this project to bed. So I'm hoping by the end of February, we will be completely done with this particular project. So job well done, Danielle and Carlos, for seeing us over the finish line.
Thank you. Any questions for Oliver Ellsworth? Last but not least, Mr. Halleck, Paquonic School?
Thank you, Mr. President. As was already mentioned, we, Paquonic School was well-represented at the Martin Luther King event at Town Hall on Monday. A second grade student, Bailey, did an awesome job reading her essay. It was very moving, I thought. So, you know, a great job, a great job to her as well. Also want to congratulate Principal Mahalco for being named a finalist for Elementary Principal of the Year, which is definitely a great honor and well-deserving as well. Paquonic PTO, a winter Wonderland Dance will be on Friday, January 24th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The next PTO meeting is Monday, February 3rd, in the library, also from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Paquonic School is also having a family game night on Friday, February 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the cafeteria. If you have a favorite board game that you would like to bring, that would be encouraged as well. Teacher Professional Development Day is on Tuesday, February 11th. There will be no school. And finally, the Winter Strings Concert is on Wednesday, February 12th, from 6:00 to 6:45 p.m. in the Paquonic Gymnasium. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Paquonic? Seeing hearing none, Dr. Hill, Superintendent's Report?
It's 2025, but I'm still getting treated like 2024, so I ain't got nothing to say because this is what y'all do, every man. I listen to y'all talk, so Superintendent's-
Cross all those line items over.
Flavor Flav report is. I'd like to thank Kevin Hanigan, First Shift Department Manager of the Dollar Tree Distribution Center here in town for the generous donation of a pallet of copy paper, which was distributed among the schools. And my next coffee talk is on Tuesday, January 28th, which is my lovely wife's birthday, that's what makes it a better day, at 5:00 p.m. in the LPW boardroom. That is it. You guys took all the other ones. Have to actually be quiet.
Can I ask a cultural question? What is Flavor Flav, and how does he relate to your statement?
So, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked. Flavor Flav is, is part of the rap group from the 80s, Public Enemy? So you can Google him, Flavor Flav. He wears the clock. You had to have seen this guy. And so he's a hype man.
I'm more out of touch than you think. Help me out.
So a hype man, the idea, the analogy is that you guys say the rap.
I mean, that's not on the agenda.
I go, "Yeah." Like, I have nothing really to say. That's what the Flavor, thank you, thank you, Mr. Madison, for at least acknowledging, you know, giving me something to say. I appreciate that.
James, we're going to get together and watch Flavors of Love. And we're going to just livestream it.
Love to. Okay.
He sponsored the women's Olympic polo, water polo team.
Very true.
Okay.
That's a good, that's true.
Dr. Hill, I would like to thank you and Sally Brown and many others on your staff for putting that program together at Windsor High School. It was a nice thing to have Windsor part of a showcase like that and have educators come back into the room and saw a number of former educators from Windsor who've moved to different places, and great event.
So I'd like to say, Mr. President, in follow-up to that, thank you. So acknowledgement to my district, your name is Brown and the team, but the commissioner could not stop raving about, you know, how well things went, how well folks were treated, our food services, Ms. Patty Patton and her team. The finger foods were loved by everyone, so I don't know, maybe they'll call us again. I hope not. It's a lot of work, but people appreciate it, and it was nice to actually host people from around the state, so that was really nice. So you get to show off, you know, Windsor and, you know, what we do, our facilities, so people enjoy themselves.
Thank you. Committee reports?
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
You know, I go around the state and I brag about Windsor, and I keep telling them, I was like, when she was telling it to me, I was like, I wasn't shocked. I was just like, you know, maybe I take it for granted, but you know what? We actually have a good school system here in Windsor, but, you know, other people think, "Oh, it's Windsor, those kids, those people." But at the end of the day, you know, a lot of people from across the state that was here left away from here, like, you know what? Maybe we should pay a little bit more attention than just looking at data on a piece of paper. Maybe we should just really be looking at the schools for what they are and not just data points. So your team did a good job representing Windsor.
Ms. Taylor?
I just want to call out, because people were calling me, texting me, why was I not there? My daughter is part of the Shad Derby Court. Her orientation was that night, so there was a lot of people that you would have seen, but their parents couldn't be there because of, our daughters are going to be part of Shad Derby. So just want to call that out because I did get a few text messages, "Where are you?" I normally would be at something like that, but I couldn't miss a mandatory orientation situation for an amazing town event, so stay tuned for that as well. We do have 10 girls from Windsor High School competing, two that do not attend Windsor High School, I believe, but they, of course, are from the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the superintendent? Committee reports? First, I'll go to Mr. Lockhart.
Yes, we are about to embark on the Finance Committee. We're going to do it a little bit different this year. We are not going to parrot the book, oh, excuse me, we're not going to have the superintendent and his staff parrot the book to us. We all shall be prepared and read the book ourselves, and we shall be prepared to discuss each line, line by line, and to be able to have the staff here and be able to answer our questions. I believe if we stop the parroting, I believe we can cut that process down by like 20%, 30%, and we can be a lot more efficient in what we're doing. We're still going to do the process of the pink sheets, the blue sheets, the yellow sheets after each session. If there's something that needs to be answered, we will go through that process. We will also go through the process, if you have a question between now and I would say the Friday before the meeting, if you got something by email that will give the staff a fair opportunity to answer your question before the meeting, please put that in the email to myself, Dr. Hill, and Sally Brown. Please do not do it the Monday before. Please do not do it to the day of, because then it will just be answered hopefully during that meeting. If not, it will be put to the sheets for the next upcoming meeting. So I want them to be as prepared for our responses as possible, but I want to make sure that we go through every single line because it's a tough budget year for the town, and we want to make sure that we can articulate, all nine of us, why each line is placed where it is and what it goes for and what impact it has on the education of our kids in this town. So I don't want anyone leaving this committee process saying they didn't know, they didn't understand. We're going to ask the questions, and we're going to be prepared. So I'm looking forward to the process, and I'm looking forward to candidate debate with focus on objectives, student goals, and outcomes. I want to make sure we come from that perspective, and if we do that, this will be a very good budget process that we can give to the town council. Thank you.
One thing I would add is, in looking at this year, we were all on the board last year, so we should all have our budget books, and whether it's the original budget book or the final approved budget, because there were changes from what we were presented last year. Take a look at those when you can. If you have a question about why or how, were these the same numbers as last year? Dr. Hill didn't say we were increasing a number here. Why is this number, you know, different? So that may lead to the questions that you have in looking through the process.
Mr. President, I believe that the budget book also shows what was projected the previous year and then what it looks like this current year. But also, I would encourage you bring your budget book from last year, because I'm imagining that that budget book you had last year, there's plenty of notes in there and stuff that you want to follow up year over year to make sure that what we approved last year followed through this year. And if it's something you have a question about, we're able to answer those and really dig down to the matter instead of speculating and stuff of that nature.
And by having that budget book, you may have more, I know I have a lot of comments in the margins from the original book that may help me say, "Oh, yeah, that's what that program was," or "That's why we had those numbers," and it won't really be a question, or maybe it will lead me to another question on it, but thank you.
Is there a, forgive me if I missed this, is there a schedule for each form of what we're going to be covering? Like, do we have like a, like, are we going through section A, this form, and section B, this form? Am I missing, is it somewhere that I'm not seeing it?
Mr. Lockhart?
So yes, there will be a schedule of what we typically do, and then I can have, I will ask Dr. Hill to have his staff mail out the proposed one. And typically what we do is we go from 6:00 to 8:30, or 6:00 to whatever we agree upon. And if we feel we can accelerate that schedule, we will. If we feel we need to change stuff around based off of questions or availability of personnel, we have the flexibility to do that, but I will work with Dr. Hill to make sure I get that schedule out to you by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lockhart? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, after everything wraps up with the Finance Committee, we do plan to have another meeting with the Policy Committee of the whole board regarding the cell phone policy conversation, just to wrap things up. So I'm hoping to give us a little bit of time after the Finance Committee meeting, because there's going to be a lot of meetings. I don't want to just bombard us all with another meeting. So hopefully we can meet in either later March or early April, just to give us some space, because as I mentioned a moment ago, we will be going for quite some time with the Finance Committee meeting. But just keep that timeframe in mind for now, and we'll have more exact dates to come soon.
And I think, I think the chances are we'll have, apart from the cell phone, there probably is a good chance we'll have a Policy Committee meeting on anything that's changed regarding the current laws.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Wallaston?
Oh, no. I had a question procedurally for the budget. Did I miss the window? So, so all the questions we ask build up to, I think, I can only think of two purposes, right? One is you need to know the budget so you can explain it to the town, right? Because that's part of just the communication job. The other one is at some point you have a line drawing exercise, right? And just like we did last year, and say, okay, if we come in at the number, yay, done. If we say can't afford to go down, if you want it to be aspirational, what if you want it up, right? So it comes down, I call it the line drawing exercise because it just, it happens a lot of budgets. You rank everything and you chop whatever you need to in order to hit the number. So at some point we have to do that line drawing exercise. I had asked last time, and everyone was kind enough to grant, it was like, what if we just hit 4% or whatever? Can we kind of jump to that? Because one of the things is, if you're going to try to cut the budget, everyone should be able to say, well, if you had to cut the budget, if we're person by person, how would you hit 5%, 4%, 3% increase if you're going to try to do that? Or you can always turn it over to the chief executive and say, "Please hit a number," and he can come back with a number. It just comes down to that at the end of the day. So the information is good, but like, how does the line drawing stage work? Do we just throw it to the superintendent and say, "Hey, hit a 4%?" Or do we have any influence to say, you know, "Thank you for the 4% number, those are your line items, can we shift these line items?" Because that's the hardest part of the exercise, and I just want to work backwards from that.
Mr. Lockhart?
So pretty much we provide the budget assumptions as a board, and then from there, I'm saying "he" because it's a male, he then provides us what he feel he needs to run the school system based off- He then provides us what he feel he needs to run the school system based off of current finances. And then from there, once he presents the budget to us, it then becomes our budget of how we would like to see it, up and down and scrutinized. To just tell him to give a flat number, that could be a way of doing it, but we didn't do that in the budget assumptions. We didn't tell him to do that. So I'm not saying that we've historically done it this way. That's the way you should do it. But historically, we want to make sure everybody understands the lines of what's going on so that when we get to-- we have to go and defend it to the Town, the Town Council. A lot of times, people say, "Oh, I don't know what that means," or "I don't understand," or "We were rushed." So that's why we went to a committee of three, to a committee of the whole, to make sure we did all the committee work in committee. So when we got to the meeting, at that point, it's really not the Superintendent's budget anymore. It's the budget of the board. And that's the time that we start making changes back and forth of what we would like to see in the budget.
Ms. Taylor?
I am not trying to speak for you, but are you saying we're going to get to that point anyway when he gives us like a green sheet and says, "Okay, if I did this, or I cut this, this, and this, this is what we get to this?" I think what he's saying is, why do we have to go through all of those things to get to that? Could we see what things would look like if sooner? Like, if this, then this sooner? Because you go through all that to just get to-- okay, so, all right, if we were to cut it, what we're going to-- what would you cut if, or what could you cut? He's asking, do we have to go through all that to get to that?
Yes. My answer is yes. You should know what you got and what's on the table before you decide any cut.
Not deciding, but do we have to go through all that to get to that? He's saying-- is that what you're saying?
Thank you. You're clarifying the phone. I appreciate that. I'm not trying to dismiss that stage, right? Because I do agree, like I said, part of our job is to communicate. Even if, whether you agree or disagree, if someone says, "Why is that in the budget and what does it do?" You should be able to articulate it, regardless of your personal opinion, right? So there's an education campaign. I fully support that, because you got to communicate to the town. And some have to be in front of the council and get the money, right? So there's that too. But I'm not just-- I don't want to miss the fact that there's a second dynamic to that, which is if it comes back from the council, "Hey, you have to cut a million like we had to do last year," or "We're going to challenge it," right? Because that's what Republicans do, right? So it's like, at some point, there is that-- I call it the line drawing exercise, because it really is. Rank, cut.
Okay.
I want to keep that in mind, because does that change our behavior is where I'm going, yes. Do you think of different things when you know that line drawing exercise is coming?
So, yes. I pretty much informed the Superintendent based off of previous practices. I wanted him to come in with a true budget. And then I also let him know that last year, they asked for a million-dollar cut. And I asked him to be prepared to articulate that, but I'm not leading with that.
And I agree with you, by the way.
Yeah, so we will be prepared for that. And I wish to be very clear that based off of the budget that's been presented to you, if we make the cut, it's going to be bodies. So I want to make sure we understand exactly what we're talking about, since we're being candid. It will be bodies. There's nothing left to cut from programs. There's nothing left to cut from software unless we want to run bare-bones operations. There's a lot of-- you know, we see some of the negotiations we just had. We got contractual obligations. We got transportation costs that have gone up. We just talked about the insurance that has gone up. So there's some real true costs that are hard costs that just frankly cannot be cut. And if there are any cuts that are asked from us, from the town or through referendum, it will be employees. I just want to make sure that we're very clear going into this.
Yeah. Can I ask you thoughts?
Are you-- as many as you want?
No, I'm a big fan of "ask for what you need to be successful." I tell people that all the time at work. I don't care. Tell me what you need to be successful. So I agree with you. Here, what does it take to run the schools in the opinion of the Superintendent? So I do, just to say, I support that notion 100%. That's just how you function. And then I do agree, budget means headcount. But I've said that. You know, you say it a little more caringly. I say it more clinically, but yeah, budget means headcount. That's just how budgets work.
And there's also implications when you cut. And that is if people say, "Wow, Windsor is not going to have 20 kids in third grade. They're now going to have 25 in third grade. I think I'm moving where I can get more money and have fewer kids." So there's an impact on that decision that's made. Well, thank you, Mr. Madison and Ms. Taylor. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to the next item, Other Matters Announcements. Mr. King, any announcements? Mr. Madison, any announcements?
I just want to put a plug in. I appreciate what the resident said today about bringing something from the ground up and bringing it in here. I've talked to Ayana that. We were brainstorming. I called it-- I forget what I called it. She had a better term. It's the outside, inside out, or whatever it was. What did you say? Outside in. Inside out. Inside out. Anyway, Mike, it's ground reality. It's management by walking around. There's all sorts of terms. What's happening on the ground? And I get that getting in front of the board is a hot seat, right? And I will personally commit to not making it too hot. And I did talk to Dr. Hill about that, but that's an example of something on the ground. Now, is that particular item worthy? I don't know. But I said to her, here's my text, where it's like, I want to-- maybe it's the kids. You give them five minutes. For all the stuff we do that frankly is-- we all know what the answers are. 90% of the questions come in front of us. It'd be nice to see what's happening on the ground. So, I don't know. Just want to put an plug for what she said.
Add it, and I'll-- I'll second it.
All right. And I-- okay. I still owe you--
So I think there's general consensus of contacting Dana Gagne about bringing the composting plan to a board meeting. Whether it's-- February's could be a busy meeting, but maybe March.
Yeah. And I'm okay being strict about time. Yeah, just because you're nice to bring them in, doesn't mean you have to be like, "Okay, you have half an hour."
Mr. Wallaston, any--
None from me, thank you.
Mr. Halleck, any announcements?
No announcements.
Mr. Lockhart? Yes, I will be out of town at the NSBA Advocacy and Leadership Institute, as well as lobbying on Capitol Hill. So I'm looking forward to meeting with the majority leaders of the House and Senate.
Turned down.
Wow. And let them know that I know Mr. Paul Panos.
You got to draw names sometimes, right?
Yeah.
So I'm excited about the fact we're not walking in the spirit of fear here in the town of Windsor. We're going to keep operating as is, and we're going to do what's best for our kids. And I'm going to go down there and continue to advocate for kids in the state of Connecticut, as well as the nation. So I'm excited about the opportunity and the challenge of articulating my viewpoint on behalf of the state of Connecticut. But we will get it done, and I'm hoping some other things will shake out that I will be hopefully glad to announce in February at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ms. Cantor still?
Ms. Cantor, Jill?
Any announcements?
Thank you. No announcements, but I just want to thank you, Mr. Lockhart, for going there for representation. That means a lot to the town, especially if you push forward that we do need more money for special education. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, they've never put the money that they were supposed to back from the 70s into the idea program.
It'll be fun 16%. But we got to make sure you're fully funded.
Paul, why'd they do that? I wasn't here.
Paul wrote the legislation.
We were willing to spend the money.
Ms. Taylor, any announcements?
Yes, I just got word the girls beat Glastonbury 42 to 30. It's a tough team to beat, a tough team to beat, and they did it. They got it done. So I'm very, very proud to hear that, that this young team, it's a really, really young team. They only have four seniors. And after the loss, it's not a loss of Ayana Franks, because she's cheering them on too. They didn't think that they'd be able to bounce back without the seniors that they lost, and they've been able to do better than the season that they had last year. So continue to cheer these girls on. Thank you.
They also lost a student to Bristol Central, and they ended up beating Bristol--
Beating Bristol Central, so, yeah.
Mr. Panos, any announcements?
No, no, I guess not. Thank you.
Audience-- I guess I should list-- even though they were talked about before, the Finance Committee meetings. I'll quickly run through this Board of Ed Public Forum with the Finance Committee immediately after on Tuesday, January 28th, 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Board of Ed Public Forum with Finance Committee on Wednesday, February 5th, 6:00 p.m. at LPW Boardroom. And Public Forum with Finance Committee immediately after on Tuesday, February 11th, 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom. Board of Ed Finance Committee, if needed, Thursday, February 13th, 6:30 in the boardroom. And the next regular Board of Ed meeting is Wednesday, February 19th. That's correct here, 7:00 p.m. in the boardroom. Audience to visitor, Ms. Daly.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If anyone from the public would like to address the board, you may do so in two ways. You may type your name, address, and comment into the Q&amp;A feature in the Zoom application, or you may speak by clicking raise hand or dialing star nine within the Zoom app. When you're called on to speak, you'll be given three minutes to state your name, address, and comment. Please do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own, and no comments will be made by the board at this time.
Is there anybody online with a hand raised?
There are attendees. There are no hands raised.
Anybody in the boardroom would like to address the board? Seeing and hearing none. I'd like to close to audience to visitor. And looking for one more motion.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries 9-0-0. We are adjourned at 8:24.
Thanks, Jill. Great. No problem. No problem at all. I got it. I got it. We're--